Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and share the eighth grade choir with you. Unfortunately, we're down in numbers today, but they gave it their all. So thank you so much, and we really look forward to showing you further future progress and how we grow as a choir program. So thank you so much for your continued support and warm enthusiasm.
And before we turn it back to our student, just know parents at any time, if your student has a form or meeting to head out, we totally understand. And so you can stay as long as you want at home meetings or head out after your student has them. Turn it back to Amelia.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and share the eighth grade choir with you. Unfortunately, we're down in numbers today, but they gave it their all. So thank you so much, and we really look forward to showing you further future progress and how we grow as a choir program. So thank you so much for your continued support and warm enthusiasm.
And before we turn it back to our student, just know parents at any time, if your student has a form or meeting to head out, we totally understand. And so you can stay as long as you want at home meetings or head out after your student has them. Turn it back to Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, our eighth grade choir. We appreciate all that you do. Our choir is fully prepared for audition to see the Starspendal, the American's game. Good luck. My name is Amelia Silve, and I'm an eighth grader at Ole Miss in the A and B Trevor. Now, I'd like to introduce our Ole Miss drum line director by Mr. Smith. He'll be playing Zombie Schools and Bacon and Eggs.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and share the eighth grade choir with you. Unfortunately, we're down in numbers today, but they gave it their all. So thank you so much, and we really look forward to showing you further future progress and how we grow as a choir program. So thank you so much for your continued support and warm enthusiasm. And before we turn it back to our student, just know parents at any time, if your student has a form or meeting to head out, we totally understand. And so you can stay as long as you want at home meetings or head out after your student has them. Turn it back to Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, our eighth grade choir. We appreciate all that you do. Our choir is fully prepared for audition to see the Starspendal, the American's game. Good luck. My name is Amelia Silve, and I'm an eighth grader at Ole Miss in the A and B Trevor. Now, I'd like to introduce our Ole Miss drum line director by Mr. Smith. He'll be playing Zombie Schools and Bacon and Eggs.
So I just wanted to say that I am so thrilled to be able to be here with the kids performing for you. It has been a long time since we've been able to perform this meeting, so it's really great to be here. And thank the district, our building demonstration of the school board for our continued support. We are excited to be returning to the Lincoln drum line competition in March. We have a number of trophies. I think we have like four or five in victory there. So very excited to be returning with that. So thank you very much.
Back to Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and our drum line director. Here's my line to introduce our principals.
My name is Emily Gregory, and I'm a seventh reader at Ole Miss. And at this time, I'm going to turn it back to our principals, Mr. Collins and our assistant principal, Mr. McBride. We'll talk about Ole Miss vision and give an overview of 2021 to 2022 school year. But before I do, I have a dad joke for you. Why do you call fish wearing a bow tie? So fish decayed. You have Mr. Collins and Mr. McBride.
Thank you, Emily. All right, so I'm Kevin Collins, I'm the principal here at the middle school. And such a pleasure to be here tonight. As Mr. Smith noted, it's been a couple of years since we've been able to do this meeting and show off to the public. I am so proud of this staff and student body and what we're doing this year, and it's such a pleasure to be able to share it. So I wanted to start with, I'm here with my assistant principal, Mr. McBride, who will be sharing a little bit later. This is what we started with. What is our purpose at boarding Middle School? And so back in August, our staff came together, and this is something called a world. And we just simply asked, why do we exist? And as you can see on there, what's the greatest word with students? We're here for the students. Our staff care deeply about the success of our students. And each of them, when they first, on our first days back, when we came together, we have these Why I Teach little posters throughout the building. These are up there, and then they share these with their students. Each of them has a unique reason, but we're a student center of school. Based on that, we came together and we formed a vision, looking at coming back from pandemic. That would frame our thinking this year. And so this is what we came up with for our school vision. Boarding Middle School is a school where all students and staff feel safe, seen, and loved. Ole Miss students are engaged in rigorous, meaningful tasks, which motivate them to make personal connections to the content and utilize the learning beyond the classroom. Every student is inspired to create better present and future. You can see on there, we have our picture family. That is our staff T-shirt for the year. So every Friday, we come together, and that's the original take. When we think about students coming back from the time of crisis, we know that we have to start by making connections with them, love them, welcome them back, and letting them know how much we care about them. Our priority areas, which are going to frame what we talk about tonight, we have safe, seen, and welcome. That's the first one. We started with that, again, knowing where our students are coming from. We feel like they have to make connections with our student body and with each other before we can do anything else. And so one of our goals is that all students are connected and involved in these two extracurricular activities, which we're showcasing tonight. We also have a focus on equitable and aligned adaptive curriculum, which provides rich and relevant learning experiences for students beyond the classroom. We want students to make connections to what's going on outside. And then, as we're ready to enter the interview, we know how important math is, and we've spent a lot of time during this meeting showcasing. We have a math teacher around students talking about some of the amazing things we're doing in math. When we think about this year, when we came back and started in August, we knew that we had to welcome our sixth graders back in a special way. We were limited. Last year, we were on a hybrid, we were in virtual for most of last year, so students were not even seeing each other in person, except for a select few. And then after that, it really was not the same. It was better than being virtual, but when we were split into A and B, students constantly talked about how it didn't feel like real school. And so when we brought them back, we really were intentional about welcoming our sixth graders and new students back into our community. So we started with a, in the stadium, we had a sixth grade orientation where we connected every single sixth grader to a teacher advisor. We had them in small groups where they were taking tours of the campus, because our sixth graders hadn't been here yet, and neither had any of our students. So that was a really fun way to welcome them back. We have sports back, and drum line and choir. It is amazing. It's fun to be in school when we have these special extracurricular activities. Last year, our sports consisted of, we had a very short intramural setup. This year, we have real sports, and in fact, we have new sports. Because of things like our levy, we're able to have things like boys soccer. For the very first time, we had a boys soccer team at Boarding Middle School. There were over forty students who turned out. So so much fun to see that. And it's just so much fun to see. If you ever have a chance, even if your child is not in sports, go to a sporting event, because you just see so much joy in the kids and the connections they're making in these activities. We had a color run fundraiser for ASLE, and somehow, we hit the weather window. We absolutely, it was a downpouring rain, and so we feel that good things, it was a sign of good things for us. We had about a thirty minute weather window with no pouring rain that lasted that long. Food drive and service club, we were able to raise, we took thousands of pounds. Unfortunately, Mr. McBride and I got eyes in the face as a result. That was the incentive for students. And then we did, so all those things were really around our focus, safe, seen, and welcome. Doing so much, center so much of our work around it. And Mr. McBride can talk more in just a little bit about our culture around it. But we also have this relevant, rich and relevant tasks every single day. We want to engage all of our students. So one of the things we've committed to as leaders is much more frequent classroom visits to see what is being asked of our students. Are these the tasks that are to prepare them for high school and beyond? We have over five hundred visits so far. One of the things we're going to do on January twenty eighth is take some times in staff and really record and spell out what are we asking of our students as boarding Middle School students. By the time they leave us as eighth graders, what does that look like? What skills do they need to have, and what do they know, need to know, and be able to do? Each of our staff meetings, we identify the amazing things that our teachers are doing, and we showcase that work and have them show it on to their peers and say, these are the things that are working, and these are great things that are happening in their lives. And we have, we're also going to have a focus on how do we engage each of our students in the classroom, those engagement strategies. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McBride, who's going to talk a little bit about our culture.
Hey, everybody. I'm Logan Wright, my first share here, so I can personally speak to the importance of safe, seen, and welcome, because I can't thank you enough for how well I personally felt from this down, from this point into community and connection. Principal Collins and I have a very aligned vision on strategic planning to improve the outcomes for your child's academic future. But we both also are keenly aware that culture eats strategy for breakfast. We can't get to those strategic goals unless we can know of a place that your child wants to come to and wants to feel safe and welcome. Thanks, everybody. Maybe your child has received one of these at staff meeting. We open every staff meeting by writing close cards to students here. And our goal is to give every student a close card written before the end of the year. And we're about five a day in a school of six fifty, so we're going to hold that for a while and a while. I'm just super excited about that. Every Monday, we give character strong advisory lessons. We talk about connections, team building, and the ways to serve our school and serve each other. We build on that by using character cards that already exist in the school. You can see, I was following the top picture there, a little of this character card. When a staff member sees a student or is displaying positive behavior, we award them a card. They take that to the office, and we morph it into what's become the Principal's one hundredth one. It's a bingo style board. They draw a random number with their card on the board. When the board fills up, bingo style, we call all of them down, and they have a picture taken with Principal Collins, and we see the candy prize and the brand prize wearing with a T-shirt each time. Hopefully, you see those in the school newsletter that goes out every week. We have spirit weeks at every school, but we had some incredible successes this year. Hopefully, you saw your child, they didn't do anything but backpack day. That was a wild day. It was really well received. We know that holiday time is not as enjoyable for every family as we may want to believe it is. So we added a special kindness week leading into the winter break this year, and it culminated in Turkey Bowling, our first manual. It was such a rousing success, and we expect that to be back. And if you were seeing, demonstrating an act of kindness, you see the card they went into a wrapping ticket. They came up, and we drew random names, bowled for pieces of pie these last four days before winter break. Principal Collins brought Field Day Friday, so every Friday morning, he sends out somebody's personal submissions of songs that make them vague, jaded to them. That makes them feel good, and we start, we end every week with that. And part of that, we have done, maybe you've heard of litter trap Friday your child has talked about. We hide litter on campus, or we put litter on campus, and we hide and jump out and surprise kids when they pick up the litter and celebrate them and give them a hug. A ton of positive culture that we're trying to build here and look that you're hearing word of. Now, it's easy to develop those positive routines around positive behavior, but we also believe that behavior interventions can be a positive experience. Things that we have, you know, sometimes at this age, you're going to make some choices that probably weren't the best one. That's what middle school is, that's part of the middle school experience. We don't try to treat everything like it has to be this punitive moment or have some consequence attached to it. Things that we have added to help make those connections with students that are receiving some sort of behavior support. We just have restored conversations. We have dedicated staff members who's had a student support magic. Some minor situation in the classroom, that person can help intervene and just have a conversation. Hey, what's going on? How can I help? Let's find whether we can get back to fast and get back to learning. We have an interventionist, preventionist, counselor that we added to work with students that have had some issue with the substance. In the old days, those students might have been thrown out of school. But all the research shows, a student alone with no support system and that has those issues, it's only going to get worse, because when we put a support staff around them and with intentional approaches, we have a chance to bring them back into the hole and get back to learning. Similarly, we've had a very qualified and quality candidate for boarding youth in the Young Help Program who meets with students around campus. Just all these supports that we try to add for those that haven't had the greatest school experience or aren't loving every part of their school experience. Club sandwich, I'm super excited to have this person talk about it just a little bit. And still our counseling, just run around services that we want, even if behavior intervention can be a positive experience while you're here in Ole Miss. One thing we're really proud of, and it took a couple iterations to get it perfect, you know, last year, when we couldn't move, so everyone sat still in every class for six hours, and then came to lunch, and we told, they couldn't move there either. Can you imagine what that felt like in the daily life of a kid? We started this year, we were told we only had a hundred people in, so we had a hundred people out and a hundred people in. That was great in warm weather, September, October, when the guidelines changed, we could have more people inside, and the weather turned, we had to just need to bring everybody in. But we had a choice, and if you are familiar with visual language, student voices, student choice are at the top of what we're trying to do with the system. So we started all in, and a certain marker at each lunch, we asked, hey, do you want to go outside? You're welcome to do that now. Let me just tell you, there's no amount of rain that will keep the sixth graders from going outside. So if your sixth grader is coming home, I did all I could to give him a stay inside, and they just would not do it. So yeah, those are a lot of things that we're so happy to talk about and share with you.
All right, we hand it over to Bella Austin.
Hello, my name is Bella Austin, and I'm a sixth grader at Ole Miss. And I would care for some students and teachers always that were making all Ole Miss students safe, seen, and welcome. One of the ways we have dragged all students through our wide range of accessories and clothes and help all students by positive ways to connect with the school. I'd like to hear this Penny to talk about Anime Club and Trapper talk about Anime Club.
Okay, so.
Hi, I'm Denise.
Denise.
And I'm Lily. I'm talking, we are talking about Anime Club. Anime Club is about where you can make friends, talk, hang out. And I enjoy, and if that, I enjoy Anime Club mainly with other students, because we do multiple things like talk, talk about our interests in Anime. Anime Club, and mostly involves reading and rolling and talking about our interests. And the goal is to give a space for four students at school to have a different interest that you can get disregarded. What, some things we do at Anime Club include reading, talking, messing around sometimes. It depends on what messing around, but if it gets like too bad, like hey, let's not. But we're responsible for most of those. We have this one time report ready to watch a movie in Anime Club. So, and back to you.
So. So I need a one.
I'm just trying to ask, this is a story, so you have a favorite that I must tell. How do you come up with this? Other people do the same often. First in the jar, this is basically a story. People essentially get to create a fictional universe where people get to interact and have fun in this own area. With folks, golden friendship, people, and teachers, especially because you can interact with them in a sort of other setting with a unique type of story. It's a very fun sort of thing in the world happening. Anyone can play it, and anyone can be on, excuse me, on game.
Thank you, Penny and Trapper. Another way to help students feel safe, seen, and welcome is by exploring their interests through elective classes. A great example of this is art. Here to talk about art is Ms. Morine and some of her students.
Hello, I am Eon Gray. I'm an art teacher. I got a dedicated group here. We first was having more kids, and as we know, sicknesses put off, but I'm so proud of the kids on what they're making in arts every single day. It's a great place to get to show what they do, so I'm about to talk about what they're doing.
Oh, so art is beautiful, because you get to just have, make whatever it's about. It's a big, and art is a really good thing. And you basically always have to choose what you make or what, or this is what. It was really good, sort of grid, and then you put it on the canvas, and you put it on the canvas. It's gone out, and it's, I just have no confidence in it, so I'll try to sell it. It's not essential, it's, that stuff's tired, and it's, it's, I didn't, or it's just, I should do it.
Hi, hello, this is Sarah, and I'm digital photography, she's a graphic artist. And it's really cool to talk to her a lot about how photos were, and how cameras, and how to picture. And I took this one, it was so short of speed. And basically, it's some sort of speed, it's where you, where you take slow, like, who's second? And it was, I, I just, so, yeah, I think that was really cool.
My pure class, which is photography, is one of our CTE classes. So it's great that we get some extra money, so we're able to use really great materials. Like that's literally the camera that our students are going to have to use, have to get off of automatic mode, and learn how to make something cool. Right now, they're working on making stop motion animation videos. We should make that as well. So really proud of their making the photography class.
I'm Emily Gray, who does photography. I do pretty hard, and one thing I really love about it is she'll tell you like what steps you have to do, and then you can just make whatever you want, as long as it has those steps in it. And you kind of just get to be creative and make something out of play, like get patterns and like yarn. And it's really cool to do. I don't have anything with me right now today, but it's really cool to do, because you get to have what you design and make what you want. And like right now in class, we are doing all the stuff we've learned within this past semester. We're putting it together with the play and making what will with it, which I really like. And yeah, that's it.
So a big thing in our class is choice and creativity. Art is a great way to be able to express what kids are going through, what they're feeling, their interests, and in all of my classes, I like for them to be able to learn a skill, and then they get to choose how everyone's reply, use it in the real world. That's what art is all about. It's finding ways to cope with things that we're going through, to understand our emotions, our feelings, and it's a great way just to have fun and relax after birthdays. Thank you to my kids, and me too, so.
Our sixth graders could not be here today. Sixth grade, I have them at White Order, and so they get a really quick class, so it's a hack, that's all the classes, all the other classes. And it's just a couple of intros, art, getting a little bit of everything. And last up is the art show is next week, next Wednesday, five to seven. If anybody would like to come support the art, it'll be held in our library here at school. Great stuff, kids are getting their submissions by tomorrow. Should have lots of great pieces to see, so come stop by the art show at five to seven. Anytime next Wednesday. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Morine students. And finally, here's Mr. Wright and Kate, who are talking about Club Wednesday.
We're really proud of Club Wednesday. If your goal is safe, seen, and welcome, you have to be willing to take an honest assessment of students who have not felt the same, seen, welcome, or connected to the school. I greatly appreciate Principal Collins. I shared a vision with him on how we can reframe what used to be a cumulative or a consequence system for stuff behaviors into a proactive, restorative, reflective approach. We've changed the title of Club Wednesday. We're working on a theme song, but all we have so far is opening submissions for what's in lyrics maybe. It's not just a free for all where we all hold students accountable, but we give them a format to talk about what's going on with their lives. We have expectations. We have a purpose. We try to measure our success, just like we do in the classroom, the success criteria. We try to measure our success by getting back into mainstream behaviors, mainstream success levels. So I'm really excited to introduce to Kate Bradshaw, who's going to talk about how the experience has been.
Um, Club Wednesday, we go relationships, we discuss more of the university, we have a lot of stuff to discuss. You will like explain basically the wired air of virtual travel. And the group, give you suggestions, what you should learn and study. Wednesday, I feel Wednesday club is better than the membership because it helps you build a connection to a school that you're sitting in a room for six hours and have that attention. You can actually use those to talk to them.
Now back to Emily.
Thank you, Mr. Wright and Kate. Now I'll talk about goal number two, which is providing all students access to rich and relevant learning experiences. I would like to introduce Tycon and Mason to talk about what they're working on in their video game designing class.
Hi, I'm Mason Anne. Talking about tech club. And what I'm going to talk about is pretty much just the basics and how I started from nothing. And I've grown my way up to be an average girl every day, of average. And what Mr. Travis has taught us is anywhere from everything, really. He taught us how to move and just simple coding and all that. Mr. Travis has taught me a lot of things like how to code and add variables to make my game better. And I actually have a game that I made. And it's called Flappy Bird. I made this before my break and I used a lot of variables. It's actually really.
Tycon should show, his, that class is the funnest to go in. Most fun.
And this game I use a lot of strikes and one of the variables. These are all the variables I use. The secret variables, I always use the library ones. And I also made a leaderboard or something like that. Yeah. And that's all.
Thank you to our video game designers and their teacher, Mr. Travis, who not be here to speak. Now I'd like to hear this Ms. Martin, who needs to talk about ways to make social standards.
Thank you. Uh, so I am Emily Martin. I am a math teacher here. At the very beginning of our school year, first couple of days, we made a classroom constitution. We talked about rights and responsibilities. We talked about what the roles of the teacher and students are in the classroom. It's an eighth grade history classroom, so we talk about United States history and of course, the US Constitution. I did that at the beginning of the year hoping that students would make that connection that we have a classroom constitution. When we started learning about the actual constitution of the United States. And June in here did resolve it and did make some connections to actual real life. So we're happy to talk about that.
Hello, my name is Joy Myers. And I have made a bill for a classroom constitution since we made a, yeah, have a more teachers. And we made a classroom constitution to determine the rules and what we, what the rules we will follow in class. And I decided that I realized that there was to be changed, which was to be added to the rules. So I did.